Good morning and welcome to City Hall. Robin Wood is the chaplain at Chesapeake Energy Corporation. He will lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman David Greenwell if he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand?
Mayor Cornett and the council, it is a real privilege. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Father, we thank you for a tremendous city, a great city, that honors you and puts you first. In your word, you tell us to love mercy, to do justice, and to walk humbly with you. I praise you for a city that acknowledges you at every thunder game in the middle of the floor as we lift you up. I thank you for this city council and all the leaders. Your word tells us to pray for our leaders and honor them, and we want to do that today. We want to pray for wisdom, we want to pray that they would be guided by your spirit, and that you would be honored in this place today as they do justice and love mercy and walk humbly with you. In the most holy name of your son, we pray in this holy week. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for April is Poetry Month, and we are honored here to have many members of the local poetry society. Rob Burgess is the president. Rob, you want to come up? Trina Lee is the vice president. Lois Walker is the co-chair, and Patty Koch is the PSO parliamentarian. And all four of you come up. We have a proclamation because we're proud of Poetry Month, and the clerk will read it as we get settled.
Whereas the Academy of American Poets established the month of April as National Poetry Month in 1996, and whereas National Poetry Month seeks to highlight the extraordinary legacy and ongoing achievement of American poets, introduce Americans to the pleasures and benefits of reading poetry, bring poets and poetry to the public in immediate and innovative ways, make poetry an important part of our children's education. Whereas its National Poetry Month under the leadership and direction of the Academy of American Poets is now the largest literary celebration in the world. Poetry enhances and enriches the lives of all Americans. Whereas poetry is an essential part of the arts and humanities affects every aspect of life in America today, including education, the economy, and community pride and development. Whereas poetry has produced some of the nation's leading creative artists and has inspired other artists in fields such as music, theater, film, dance, and the visual arts. Now therefore Mick Cornett, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as National Poetry Month in Oklahoma City, and he encourages all citizens to celebrate the cultural riches our community has to offer and to recognize the important role of poetry in our nation's history.
Let's show our appreciation.
Well, I want to thank you for recognizing poetry in our great state of Oklahoma. The Poetry Society of Oklahoma has been around since 1934, and we are the official poetry society for Oklahoma, and I just want to thank you for that. I also want to announce that on April 21st, at Southern Nazarene University, we're recognizing youth poets, and we have Oklahoma Youth Board that's going to be recognized there, and we have students from all over Oklahoma that's coming to be recognized.
I just want to thank our councilman Larry McAtee. He is so supportive, and without him, we wouldn't be here today. And he is just so supportive of all of our endeavors, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, and there aren't many words that rhyme with whereas, so thank you. Thank you for putting up with us this morning. And we agree with you about Councilman McAtee. He's pretty good. All right, thank you all. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Every month, the South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club helps us honor one of our employees as the employee of the month. And since we have over 4,000 employees, this is quite an honor, and we are honoring today Terry Brosey. Terry, you want to come up? We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Terry Brosey has been a city employee for 12 years and is the network analyst for the Department Development Services. Whereas Terry Brosey has been the department's Heart of the City Campaign Coordinator for two years, her experience, focus, and vision really paid off in 2011 campaign as the department exceeded their giving goal by more than $3,400, a 25.8 percent increase over the previous year's giving. Whereas Terry worked with a diverse group of coworkers ranging from planners and plan examiners to construction and code inspectors to animal control officers, encouraging them to get involved in the campaign and give back to our community. Whereas Terry used all available tools and resources in her campaign, including rallies, speakers at employees' meetings, van tours of agencies, day of caring volunteer projects, and creative fundraisers. Whereas Terry was selected as the 2011 Heart of the City Department Coordinator of the Year and received the United Way of Central Oklahoma's Outstanding Employee Coordinator Award. Whereas Terry Brosey's creativity, enthusiasm, and commitment helped Development Services set a new record in giving and participation, she truly exemplifies the meaning of the heart of the city and has not only been an outstanding representative for her department, but for the city of Oklahoma City as well. Whereas this council desires to recognize Terry Brosey for her creativity, dedication, enthusiasm, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Terry Brosey, April 2012, South Oklahoma City, Kiwanis Club Employee of the Month.
Let's show our appreciation for Terry's work. And as you know, nothing happens without a vote, Terry, so I need a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And it's official. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to give a little glory to God because he's the reason that I'm here, and it's an honor and a privilege for me to be working for the city of Oklahoma City and serving the citizens.
Thank you, Mayor.
We appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Calling the meeting to order, we're now on item 3B. Conference of Mayors.
You have the item?
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8, 3C, is the appointment of Pat Ryan to the MAPS III Citizen Advisory Board in his oversight role.
Looking forward to it.
Look forward to that, too. How about a motion?
No move.
Cast your votes.
Save it for you, Gary.
Passed unanimously. Gary, we appreciate your work on that for a year. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 27th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for March 20th.
You have the item?
Second. Comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor Shavel, this morning, starting on page nine, under item 8A2, Councilman Cal, this is Ward 7, it's S.P.U.D. 601, and that needs to be deferred one week. There's incorrect wording on the agenda, and so S.P.U.D. 601, item 8A2, needs to be deferred one week until April 10th. On page 11, under unsecured structures, under item 8F1, item C, 5300 South Independence, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E, 2204 North Jordan, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item I, 1733 Northeast 13th, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item N, 1916 Northeast 26th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item R, 2841 Northwest 58th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And then on page 13, under Claims for Denial, we'd ask for a one-week deferral on the claim of Rudy Realty until April 10th, and a two-week deferral on the claim of Mark Clay, and that would be till April 17th.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, let's reset the council meeting. Convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. All right, comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA. Convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are two items. Comments or questions on the PPA?
Now, question, Your Honor, on the project is out at the fairgrounds. Will this complete the entire fairgrounds in terms of ADA requirements?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Councilman Salier asked me that just before the meeting, and I think it does, but let me get back to you on that. We had some court requirements we were trying to satisfy, and I believe we've done that, but let me get back to you on what you told the court.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, and Carol Troy is here to speak on item 4B, which is the amended and restated Civic Center. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning. My name is Carol Troy. I live at 1200 Huntington and work in the midtown area of Oklahoma City. I serve currently as the chair of the board for the Civic Center Foundation, and as you know, we've had a longstanding partnership which continues today, and actually with our discussion this morning and hopeful positive resolution, we will enhance that partnership. One of the things that we're charged with is fundraising on behalf of the Civic Center in order that it remain the pristine facility that we are all so proud of. We're engaged right now with great board leadership of Judy Love and Ann Johnstone for a 75th anniversary celebration September 27th, and we're well underway in those proceedings. We think we're going to hit our fundraising goal, which with the passage of the resolution will allow us to retain the money that we've raised. What we've been doing in the past, and actually will make another donation to the city, I believe at the next council meeting, we've been giving a third of everything that we raised back to the city. What we've discovered is that it's much easier to raise money if money goes directly to a 501(c)(3) than instead to the city, which cannot raise money. And so we feel like this will give us the freedom to continue to enhance and grow not only what we're going to be giving back to the Civic Center, but as you know, we've already made some contributions with messaging boards to the park, and we see ongoing maintenance for the park in our future as well. So we have a facilities utilization plan that we are beginning to put into place on the foundation side. We will partner with you on that, and with your approval, the city will approve up to $50,000 with the understanding that that is capped at $50,000, and the board will raise the other funds necessary to hire through an RFP process someone to do a full facilities program and plan. As you may know, there are facilities that were not able to be touched and renovated through our MAPS original project, and so some of them remain in 1930s condition. So these monies will be helpful as we know what we're going to do, what will be our first priority, and I think in your packet, you may have seen some of our intentions moving forward. There's one other item. We also have a Development and Finance Committee combination that's going to be meeting to begin putting infrastructure in place to sustain our foundation well into the future. And so I certainly am able to answer questions and hope that you recognize that this is an important partnership for us, which we intend only to enhance as years go forward.
We appreciate your work. Yes, Pat?
Just a quick question, Carol. I thank you for your work. That is a true pleasure for Oklahoma City.
It really is.
Civic Center is, and needs to be continually kept up.
Absolutely.
Does, on your foundation board, is there a city representative?
No, as a matter of fact, interestingly enough, I'm glad you asked that question. Our nominating-
I'll give my $5 later.
I will. Our nominating committee meets on April 20th, and we'd already begun discussions about how important it is when you have a partnership in place, you need to have representatives that actually sit on the board. If it doesn't, and if it's a conflict of interest in some occasions, then I think you can abstain if you feel necessary. But I think that that's one of the things we're working on, is to bring a representative onto our board to sit with us and help us make these important decisions on behalf of the Civic Center. Welcome.
Any other comments or questions for Carol?
And following up on Pat's question, how soon do you, I mean, I would urge you to have someone from the city there. I mean, my, some of the concerns I had with what happened to the park are, I think, because I don't think the city was adequately represented. I looked at the list, and there are a lot of people with city connections, but I still would argue that the city wasn't adequately represented in that decision. When we talk about the naming rights, are we talking about the naming rights to the building, or are we talking about the naming rights to the park?
The naming rights for the building, and that's probably something that's going to take a while because we've got to build the plan first, which will ultimately mean, see, we have naming rights for the hall inside. We have naming rights for the Joel Levine rehearsal hall.
And those decisions, excuse me for interrupting, but those decisions were made by your organization as to, the theaters that are inside?
I think that they were made originally with the passage of MAPS in 2001, and what we discovered was that with the intention, including the Freedom Little Theater, we were going to renovate all of those. We unfortunately didn't have enough money to do that. And so we think that our role is even more crucial now as it's been 11 years since we've renovated anything, and maintenance will continue to increase. But back to the original question, indeed, we believe that it is crucial that we have a representative on our board.
Well, I would urge you to do that. I, sometimes things that I have said personally and perhaps others may have said on the horseshoe might be taken to mean that we're not supportive of what goes on there, and that's not, that could not be further from the truth. I personally think-
No, I believe that. I do.
I think the money that was invested in the facility, the city may have got the biggest bang for their buck of anything that we've done with any of the MAPS programs. It's a wonderful restoration. The building is-
It is.
Is absolutely a jewel for Oklahoma City. And because I feel that way, I think that may, that may be why I have a little bit more passion about what goes on. It's not that I'm against it at all. It's the most enjoyable place for music in Oklahoma City, I think, and it's-
We're all very proud of it, and I understand your support. I think you've had good questions. We appreciate those questions, and as a team, I think we have nothing but a brilliant future for us ahead. Any further questions?
Larry?
Let me just, Pete, if I could ask you a question, go on, how do you go on record? A representative of the city, is what you and Pat talking about, you want a city councilman on there, or do staff members suffice, so they know what direction you're going?
My brothers would always be that a member of this body serve on it. That would always be my wish, that somebody that-
And that is our intention as well.
Actually, at some point in time, has to pull the switch, I think is important. There are times, in fact, I discussed with the manager and some other people about the possibility of a council member serving on the Native American Cultural Center Trust, and we determined that was barred by state law. We couldn't do that. But I, so that's a consistent thought for me. I think a council member, somebody that's elected by the people, it's very important that they serve on all those kinds of things.
And actually, we began talking about this, I remember, last fall, so now we're taking the steps to bring that to fruition. We agree totally.
There are at least three members of this body who have been extremely involved in the arts in Oklahoma City, and they're already serving on lots of other committees, and they know who they are, but you couldn't ask for better people. I mean, despite, even with the burden of being a politician, they're, they would be great board members, I'm sure. So there are three of us, a third of this body has been vitally involved in the arts, so.
Well, I think to make a great city, you have to have a great cultural-
And I think Pat agrees with me. Don't you agree with me that if possible, that would be a wise move?
Thank you.
I think it does a lot for the communication thing. If, when I have a question about what went on at, with regard to the decisions about bicentennial park, if I could have looked across the horseshoe to Pat and say, why did that happen? Why did you do that? Why, explain that, that's different than anybody else could explain it to me.
That's true.
And I think, it's just, it's a basic tenet of the protection of taxpayer dollars that people that are ultimately responsible for how they're spent be involved in that process.
Agreed.
Carol, thanks.
Thank you very much. Yes, surely.
Where are we with the naming of the park?
Pardon me?
Where are we with the naming of the park?
I think that for right now, we're nowhere. We're just waiting to see, I believe it, you know, as I walked in this morning, and all the dirt is beginning to be turned. I think that that is on hold. It may come back, but right now, I think that nothing's going on. Right now, our focus is getting the park finished, hopefully, hopefully in time for our celebration of the 75th anniversary. But beyond that, right now, there's nothing going.
Because, I mean, it came before, on the agenda for the parks, that it was going to be Larry Nichols Park.
And that's been pulled back, and there's no active application at this time.
That's been pulled back?
Yes.
Whose decision was it to call it Larry Nichols Park?
I think our board's decision. We have felt that Mr. Nichols has made an enormous contribution to our city, and we wanted to do something that we felt would honor his name. It was, in fact, not anything that he suggested or any of his employees suggested. It came strictly from us, and I will add that the intention originally had been that this would be a surprise, and wiser heads prevailed, and so I would hasten to add that Mr. Nichols was a reluctant participant in this.
Yeah, I believe that it didn't come from him, and what, one effect that it had, though, is that it suppressed debate. There were, there were community leaders who were going to come before the downtown design review committee, and when they heard that it was going to be called Larry Nichols Park, decided not to come. You had one sentiment on the council around the horseshoe, and then that afternoon, we learned it was going to be Larry Nichols Park, and two weeks later, it was completely different. And so to put it out there that it's going to be Larry Nichols Park, and then it passes, and then pull that back, I'm not, not really understanding that.
I don't know that anything passed, to my knowledge. I do believe that it was at Mr. Nichols' request, however, that we take his name off.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, David?
And, Ms. Troy, you may reconsider that idea of bringing someone from the council after this round of questioning, or at least limit their time. But I've mentioned it before up here on the council, but since you're here, I would like to pass it along. Once those trees are put into place, and we've got that wall, Eric, what's the name of that? Well, no, no, I mean, the wall that will hold the trees and the flowers and all that, just a-
Just one of the planting beds. I think it's just a retaining wall that's there.
Yeah. We would, I personally would like to see that as an opportunity to hold plaques for various citizens from Oklahoma City, going back to the first mayor of the city and some others that I've mentioned before. But I do have a few more names that I'd throw out. Skip from Ward 7, Prentice Scott was the first African-American to be offered an athletic scholarship from the University of Oklahoma, went on to earn all-conference awards as a running back for OU, went on to receive his PhD at the University of Maryland, continued to coach, and then eventually became the assistant commissioner for the Big Eight Conference. I would think men like Mr. Kirkpatrick, a great pioneer in the oil and gas industry as well as for all of his philanthropy, assisting with the growth of the arts in Oklahoma City would be a good candidate to be on there, as well as Mr. B.D. Eddie, one of the co-founders of Liberty Bank, and probably more important to me, helped extend the boundaries of Oklahoma City through his real estate development efforts. Pete, not to forget about Ward 4, another gentleman who was awarded a football scholarship from OU. He made Allstate in football, baseball, and All City in basketball, but before school started, he was offered a contract to play for the New York Yankees. Bobby Mercer, who replaced another great legend from Oklahoma, Mickey Mantle in centerfield, made All-Star five years after his playing career was over, was a part of the broadcast team for the New York Yankees. Patience Ladding, the first woman to be elected mayor of Oklahoma City, I think would certainly be a nice addition to that wall. And finally, the first citizen from Oklahoma City to win a gold medal, J.W. Mashburn from Capit Hill High School. You know, just, there's a large number of people who contributed to the growth and uniqueness of Oklahoma City, and I think this would be a great opportunity to educate people of their contributions and help identify the diversity of Oklahoma City and how so many different people contributed to its growth and its history. So just wanted to pass along that comment. Thanks, Carol.
Thank you, Councilman Greenwell. We will definitely take that into consideration. Good suggestions.
Other comments or questions for Troy, for Carol Troy? All right, Carol, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ready to vote on the PPA? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA, reconvene the council meeting with a consent ticket. Do we have any individual considerations?
O and P.
O and P? All right, Ed, what you got?
Let me just ask about, this is another $500,000 for the myriad gardens. The P says that it's $123,000 because to replace plant material that didn't survive the excessive heat, high winds, and drought during last summer. We just finished our warmest march in the history of Oklahoma City. I'm nervous. I took my kids to soccer this Sunday, it was 94 degrees, so I'm very nervous about what's ahead of us this summer. What are, what's going to be, if we go through that again, what's going to be our, are we going to keep replacing it each year? I mean, another $123,000, or what is our?
Yeah, that wasn't total replacement. That was just a fraction of what was replaced, and there is some loss, so we would guess that if we had another, another real severe weather event, there may be some losses, but it wouldn't be to the magnitude that we had because it would just be another percentage of the replacements. We would think those that have been in place for a year, year and a half before that heat comes would be more poised to make it through those type of droughts than the freshly-
Than newly planted.
Yeah.
Okay, the $371,000, this is, it says the increases are necessary to correct a discrepancy between the quantities listed on the detailed bid form and the quantities shown on the plans.
Councilman Shadid, if I may, there were, there were four or five major items that are included in this particular change order for the park, and the largest is unclassified excavation, which is the moving of soil. What was included on the bid form that the contractors actually bid was different than was actually shown in the plan, so there was a discrepancy between the two, and this corrects that discrepancy. That total alone on this change order is about $230,000. That total alone on this change order is about $232,000, just in the number differences, one on the form, one versus what was actually drawn in the plan. So it corrects that error. There's also playground safety servicing, some light pole bases, a pedestrian bridge, and this was mostly some things that you'll find today in the children's garden. All the work's been completed. This just reconciles that so we can work towards closure on the contract.
So this is our Fifth and Sixth Amendment. Do you think we're coming to the end?
There will be one more amendment. We're expecting that next month. There's three outstanding issues on the park. There's a drainage correction that needs to occur in the great lawn. There is some minor irrigation changes. And then of the plants that are not included on the change order six today, or the amendment six today, there are four plant species that we're going to substitute and the decisions haven't been made on those yet, but we'll have those to you next month. There'll be a final document for your consideration next month and then we'll be able to final accept the park.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the consent docket?
Yes, I just would like to... On M, could you send me after council? I just have a couple of questions I can ask after council on M.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of a related question and it jogged my memory when the discussion on the Civic Center Foundation come up. When the Myriad Gardens Foundation was being discussed, Mr. Tolbert made a commitment to have somebody on their foundation from this horseshoe. Your Honor?
Yes, I'm serving in that role.
Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto the concurrence docket. Just three items. Have a motion? How about a second? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. We begin with a series of zoning cases. The first is in Ward Two. It's an ABC issue at 7801 North May Avenue. Ed?
There's no protests. Has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
No protests. A plan the commission wants to approve. I would just move. This is to permit low point beer service in association with a restaurant.
All right, cast your votes. Item 8A1 passes unanimously. Item 8A2 has been deferred one week until April 10th. Moves us to item 8A3, which is a storage facility in Ward Five. The zoning request at 8701 South Santa Fe Avenue would change it from R1 single-family residential to a simplified plan unit development. David?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. We heard this initially a couple of weeks ago and there were some concerns voiced from some of the citizens. My understanding is the owner has since met with them and is there anyone this morning here to speak on this particular item? And I do think they were able to resolve the question, so I would recommend that we move this for approval.
All right, we're voting on item 8A3. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A4 is a medical administration building in Ward Five. The address is 10501 South Blackwelder. It's currently R4 general residential and it would become a simplified plan unit development. David?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? There's been no protest on this and it's been recommended by the planning commission, so I would recommend that we approve this.
We have a second on item 8A4? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8A5 is a proposed name change that was recommended for denial by the planning commission. It's in Ward Seven. It would change the name of Northwest 96th Street between Northwestern and the railroad to Jeffrey Goldsmith Place. Skip?
Well, unfortunately, we established a policy and guidelines for name changes of public streets and the planning commission and of course, I don't see any exception in reference to the changing of the name. I think the applicant has great honors and credentials, but unfortunately, if you make an exception for one, then you've got to continue down that road to exceptions for others. And I think the council was very forthright in reference to looking at the past of name-changing and in reference to the policy that we did establish, that we should stay consistent with that policy. But one of the things that I'm kind of perplexed by is that, you know, in the application process, do these people really get a full vetting before they pay the $1,400 that they're not going to get back? If it's told upfront that, you know, "We have a policy and by no means do yours fit the policy," why would somebody still want to pay $1,400?
The policies attached to our application and in this case, our staff met with, I think it was Mrs. Jordan, before she submitted and explained that we weren't going to be able to recommend it and we didn't feel that the planning commission would, but she still felt strongly enough about honoring the pastor that she wanted to do it. So we met with her a couple of different times to explain the requirements, so...
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And I would support the recommendation from staff and also the recommendation from the planning commission on this.
Yeah, so your motion is to deny. We have a second?
Second.
Cast your votes. It is denied. I'll just give a little bit of background. We approved maybe a handful of very similar naming changes in the early part of the last decade and we could see a pattern start to develop where very proud congregations wanted to name their particular street that went in front of their church after a pastor, a long-serving pastor. It seemed like a very good idea on individual, isolated cases. And then we remember we have 1,200 churches. And if this policy continued, there was going to be a lot of name changes going on. And so the council went into a naming process that kind of established some guidelines so the council and the planning commission could kind of all get on the same page about what would be appropriate going forward. And so I think this one kind of probably saw that what may have looked like a precedent from many, many years ago, not necessarily realizing that the policy had changed. So I think we all feel good about where we are with it, but I can see how these things get caught up in, you know, one church talking to another church and one precedent apparently being established. But I appreciate the planning commission's work on this and I'm sure Mr. Goldsmith is a very fine individual. I don't know that I've met him, but I hope he won't take offense at the unanimous denial in this case.
Well, I think there was one other major concern in reference to this because I think there had been some statements that the property that was owned by the congregation of the church. But at the same time, you have a very serious public safety issue in reference to identifying streets because you have a railroad track that is, you know, divided down, going north and south. And, you know, if you name one side of the railroad track, a name and then the other side of the railroad track is still 97th Street, then, you know, that would be a major...
Yeah, and in general, we don't like to rename numbered streets anyway, just because it, you know, it helps establish locations about where people are and as you said, there is a public safety issue there. All right, move on to item 8C. This is an ordinance up for final hearing today. It's the third time we've looked at it and it deals with the building codes. Anybody here wishing to speak under this issue today before we vote? All right, how about a motion?
Second.
All right, comments or questions on item 8C?
Quick question, Your Honor.
Yep.
As we adopt this particular ordinance, we are adopting the one the states suggested we adopt that does not require residential sprinklers. Is that correct?
It does not mandate that. That's correct.
Thank you.
And we have people here making sure that we carry through with that adoption.
All right, cast your votes on 8C. Passed unanimously.
We need the emergency.
Voting on the emergency and it also passes. Item 8D is a public hearing. This is the second time we've heard this issue. It deals with the booting of cars. We have one person that has signed up to speak. Robert Farah?
I'm Robert Farah. I live at 2001 Cedar Ridge Road and the company I work for owns the JDM Place Building in Bricktown. That's how we're kind of connected with this issue. I just want to say that from our perspective, we support the ordinance. The police department is very supportive and wants to go this direction. We feel like it is an important way to help keep the parking issues in Bricktown on a more positive and good level for people who come and visit us. The negativity associated with parking in Bricktown, as we all know, has come and gone and we try to keep that as low as possible and this is just one more way that maybe the police department can help control that.
We appreciate your comments. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
How about a motion to move this forward?
Second.
Okay, we're voting on item 8D. Passes again and we'll review it again one more time before voting on the resolution. Onto item 8D. It's a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8E? No one has signed up? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under 8F? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Onto item 8G and H. We have Mike Meis here today to give us a little bit of an update on the improvements projected for the Oklahoma State Fairgrounds and the Senior Health and Wellness Centers. Mike?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Manager, I'm happy to be here. We brought this before you last week and Councilman Ryan requested that we provide a presentation on these two items, which we're going to do this morning. So we have PowerPoints available for you that summarize what these project requirements documents consist of and what their purpose will be in the MAPS III process. Project requirements have been used in other MAPS projects, going back to MAPS for Kids and the original MAPS projects. They serve two primary purposes there, to provide guidelines for architects and engineers who are selected to actually do the design of a particular project. And they also, in the case of MAPS III, provide a summary for the MAPS III Citizens Advisory Board and the subcommittees to allow them to better understand what the specifics of a project may be going forward as they work with those architects and engineers. The development of these, we use a number of resources to develop these project requirements. We have consultants of our own who have specialties in the areas of each of the individual projects. In the case of this, the Fairgrounds project requirements, we also utilize the Oklahoma State Fair Master Plan. We've talked a number of times with Fairgrounds staff. We've incorporated some City of Oklahoma City engineering standards. We've had input from the subcommittee and we've collected data from a number of other The contents of these documents include a background or a history of the individual project, a project description, a description of the site, and an analysis of the site, where that's available. With some projects, such as the wellness centers, we don't have sites yet, so that's not included, but there is a description of what some of the desirable features of a site might be. Space descriptions and functional relationships, design standards, and I'll give you examples of all of these things as part of this presentation so that you'll be able to see examples of these individual categories. And then obviously, budget and schedule, and budget and schedule are as approved by city council in the implementation plan. The process has been that we've developed draft documents. They've been reviewed by the MAPS staff, then submitted to the appropriate subcommittee, received and incorporated by those subcommittees, sent to the advisory board, which has recommended their approval, and then sent on to city council. After city council approves them, they will go on to the architect or engineer who's selected for the individual project. Some specifics about the Oklahoma State Fairgrounds improvements plan. Phase one is limited to effectively site improvements, although it does include a limited master plan as well for the area surrounding the exposition hall to make sure that ingress and egress are maximized and consistent with the goals of the remainder of the fairgrounds. The bulk of this first phase will be parking and infrastructure, including sewers, lighting, underground electrical, possible permanent restroom facilities. Phase two will be the new exposition hall of approximately 300,000 square feet. The design standards and what I've put up here is kind of a summary of the things that are included in the design standards. In the actual project requirements documents which you've received, there's a fairly extensive list of design standards that are specific to each of the individual projects. But the kinds of things that get considered as part of these design standards are climate, circulation, access, parking, grading, utilities, site amenities, landscaping. One specific example on the fairgrounds for the first phase, the carnival area that is part of the fairgrounds requires a significant amount of electrical out in the parking lot area, but the design of that has to be in trenches, which allow for a lot of flexibility in terms of setting that up and for multiple kinds of events. So there's some specifics about things like that in these design standards. Then architectural considerations, you know, the general character of the improvement, flexibility and expansion, making sure that they meet codes, accessibility, life safety, interior design, site amenities, landscaping, and then any special features that may apply to a specific project. This is an example of what we refer to as a bubble diagram. It's not a scale drawing, but it's designed to give the architect or engineer on the project a feeling of how spaces need to relate to each other, adjacencies that are required, and how the building will function, once the building or the facility will function once it's completed. And this is derived, in the case of the fairgrounds, from our discussions with Fairgrounds staff and with our consultant regarding how an exposition hall might best work. Once again, these are guidelines for the architect or engineer who will have a significant amount of contact, both with the subcommittee and opportunities to work with, in this case, the Fairgrounds staff. These are based on conversations, again, with the Fairgrounds staff and with our consultants, suggested sizes and types of spaces that would be included in the exposition hall. The budget is straight out of the implementation plan. There are no changes in the budget. The schedule...
Can we go back to the budget?
Certainly.
And just look at that a little bit more closely?
Excuse me, may I ask a question? On that previous slide where you showed the...
Thank you. On the previous slide where you showed, yes, that one right there, exhibit hall A, B, and C, are they designed where they could all be opened up to one large facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The goal is to have one very large space that can be divided into smaller spaces so that there can be multiple events in that building as well.
One other question, if you don't mind. As far as the components of the new exhibit hall, when we have heard discussions from the...
Convention Center?
No, the convention center, I'm sorry. As far as requirements for upgrades in the electrical and the data areas to accommodate computers and things like that, have you visited with them as it relates to the fairgrounds? I know there are different types of exhibits, but I would suspect, if not currently, that the demand for those types of issues will be here before we know it with respect to their types of conventions and exhibits.
And actually, those are part of the design standards. There are some... requirements than some of the other events that would take place at the fairgrounds. And the goal is to build in as much flexibility to that space as we possibly can, so that it can optimize its rentability.
Thank you.
If that's a word.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on the fairgrounds?
I have a question, Your Honor. Mike, on the parking lot design...
Yes, sir.
The fairgrounds has probably one of the ugliest parking lots in the country, but it works well because it accommodates a lot of horse trailers, and I think that's great. But parking lots typically are not very attractive. Is there any guidance in this particular document that would direct an architect or consultant to include some landscaping or improvements in what, at least what some people would consider improvements, in the appearance of the parking lot?
Yes, sir. There are some guidelines in there with respect to landscaping.
That would impact the parking lot area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, questions on the fairgrounds? All right.
Okay, we'll go to the next presentation. Some portions of this are identical to the presentation that we just made with respect to the general nature of these project requirements. Those slides are the same. Sorry? Oh, okay. With respect to the wellness centers, we used a different set of resources. We have a different consultant for the wellness centers, who's a nationally-recognized senior wellness center expert. We used, again, Oklahoma City engineering standards in some places. We used the AIP study, which was presented to the subcommittee and to the advisory board to try and develop some general standards for the wellness centers. Input from the subcommittees, and once again, data from other sources, including sources here in Oklahoma City and nationally. We've looked at a number of other wellness centers across the country to try and develop some of these guidelines. This slide is effectively the same. So is this. Process is the same. Senior wellness centers. You've had an opportunity to look at the two documents. They're very different in size. The wellness center document is much larger, and in fact, it's a little bit easier to develop a larger set of standards for the wellness centers because of the building type, and there are a number of special uses within that building type that need to be considered, for which we provided guidelines for the architect and engineer. But some of the overall things that need to be considered, we know that, we don't have a site plan for a wellness center because we don't know where they will be. There will be, they'll be in different areas of the city to serve different populations and possibly different demographics. Each facility needs to reflect the nature of its surrounding neighborhood. That's one of, that's a very, we think, a very important guideline. The current budget, as we understand it and as we have worked with it, should fund the construction of four different centers. Amenities in each of those facilities may be different based upon the needs of that individual community.
Mike...
Yes, sir.
Excuse me for interrupting you, but this is a point that I, when the first responses to the RFP came back, I became a little bit concerned that maybe we have, the template that we use is a little too tight. And this is where I'm coming from. I had originally contemplated that the wellness centers would be vastly different. They wouldn't be just a little bit different. They would be tremendously different, because each, if we're going to ask people to handle all the O and M, then it has to be something that's going to fit with what's something they're already doing. I had perceived a situation where one entity might do a wellness center that would focus on, say, the medicine side of it, like the University of Oklahoma, the Health Sciences Center might do one, but it would focus on the health of elderly. I mean, they have all the students there, nursing students, dental students, all those people, and you could, it would be a high-level medical-type facility. One might be someplace else, maybe perhaps one in southeast Oklahoma City that would be focused on, it'd have a medical piece to it, but it would, its emphasis would be job retraining or people that are starting to want to do other things, maybe they need to be retrained for another job, maybe they just need to do something to keep their mind active, to be able to enjoy their later years. One at perhaps that OCU that would deal with the arts, and it would have just a small wellness piece. And it seems like we've lost that. It seems, now, I'm not sure I'm right about that, because I wasn't there, I haven't listened to all the things, but it seems like somehow that's gotten lost in it, because I think if you're going to get people to, again, I've already said this, but I think if you're going to get people to put the O and M up, you're going to have to find, the hook has to be baited with something that is part of what their mission is already. And it seems to me that somehow these templates were drawn so tightly that they're all going to be pretty much the same. And they may be different architecturally, but they're going to be the same. And I worry that we're not going to be able to attract people that'll put the money up to make it work unless we find a way to entice them by letting them design the plan. I may be wrong about it. Like I said, wasn't it all the meetings, and I don't know, but when the bids came back, we got one from a demographic that just is not, wasn't a good way to do it. It just was, to me, on its face, the demographics of one of those applications wasn't good enough. Now, I don't say it wasn't good enough, that's bad. I don't mean it wasn't good enough. It was inappropriate for what our overall idea of where a wellness center should be located, that's what I mean, it wasn't, it was good enough. Certainly, that's a bad choice of words. We had people that were, the Community College, for instance, which was the, carried the torch for this thing, they endorsed the idea in the election, they found it impossible to bid because of the restrictions that were on it. I just, I worry that we've somehow, in the translation between the idea and the hard, cold, hard facts, we've lost something, and we may have lost the ability to do it if we do that.
Well, see, Mike, it seems like, I mean, for a lot of these projects, the Achilles heel is that there's no money for operational budgets, and it seems like the first casualty may be the wellness centers. What, I mean, we got two, from the YMCA and the City-County Health Department, we're left with those two, and neither one or, both have problems. So I'm wondering, can we get the four? I mean, can we get to one or two, much less four? Is there, is there anything in this that restricts us from changing strategy if we decide that we can't, that we can only get one or two viable partners?
I don't think there's anything in this particular document that restricts that. Like I said, these are guidelines, and we've encouraged in these documents diversity based on geographic neighborhood. And the size of, there's no limitation on the size or a maximum size of any of the individual components within these documents. Once again, these are guidelines for what might be considered a typical senior wellness center throughout the country. But it doesn't limit them specifically to, you have to have this component, you have to have this component, and you have, the percentages between the two have to be exactly the same going forward. As part of the, and frankly, the operating partner process, which you described, which you both talked about, was intended to try to be open enough so that, I mean, I think it was a fairly open process, and I think that's demonstrated by the fact that we got two very different proposals.
I would say that what we saw when we put out the initial kind of RFP was great enthusiasm that seemed to diminish the further we got down the process, and in some cases, incomplete. I would say at this point, I don't think we've fully vetted the concept with the prospective operators.
I agree with you.
I think we need to go back to them, talk to them a little bit more...
I agree.
...before we say, "It didn't work, let's open our eyes to new things." I think we need to fully vet the current process first, go back to them, and I intend to, go back to these operators and talk to them, and I still think, though, that there are opportunities with larger-scale developments who might want to do something that's senior-oriented, where this could be plugged in down the line, too. And I'm a little bit disappointed we haven't seen the development community come forward with some larger idea of a larger development, you know, knowing the demographics of the senior population in this community and almost every community is going to explode so rapidly and on predictable basis, that I think this can be a very important component to something very special.
Right.
I think one thing we might look into is if they're all not going to offer everything, which I don't think they all should have to offer everything, that we work some kind of, where we have a transportation system built into it, so that we make these accessible. If you live in south Oklahoma City, and so for my idea, that the University of Oklahoma would put a health, I mean, a serious health-related facility there, and you needed that, that there'd be some way you could get from south Oklahoma City to that facility. Or if OCU, for example, could be convinced to make an arts function part of theirs that you could get from northeast Oklahoma City to the campus at OCU. I think a lot of them were put back also on this city-owned land thing. I don't think that most, I know the Oklahoma City Community College was absolutely, that was almost, that was almost a deal-breaker for them, and they maybe should have known it, but I flat didn't know it, and I don't know that any of us around the horseshoe realized that that was one of the requirements before we got started. Probably should have, but I don't think we did.
I think that's something we can work through. I think there are ways to help get through that issue.
I think there are, too.
You know, I think when we started on this, we, first of all, this is still a bit amorphous. This is still in the formulation stages, and I don't think we've excluded anything at this point in time. I think we were hoping, as Mr. Ryan and Mr. Cornetto alluded to, to come up with somebody whose mission is out there and help them further their mission and do that, and bring some operating dollars that they have to further their issue, whether it's helping some social-challenged areas, whether it's to be in health, whether it's to be in recreation, whether it's to be in education, whether it's to be in arts, and to kind of funnel that into another facility that's doing, and the synergy between those would make it work. Obviously, there's all kinds of recreational facilities, rec centers that work, YMCA's and health and fitness centers that make it and are paying the debt service on it. I mean, they are doing that. So having a building out there, and just looking at the operational costs, if you can blend that with somebody that already has a mission and some operating dollars to perform that mission, that's very helpful, but we're kind of plowing new ground here, and people are a little hesitant to step up and jumping out and doing that. But we're still hopeful that we're going to find someone. Maybe it's going to be City-County Health, maybe it's going to be the YMCA, the two that, or maybe we can team with an educational facility, maybe we can team with an arts facility, a social services provider, somebody that's already managed a mission providing these services, and get the right marriage going. I think there really is potential for this. We just haven't come upon the right one at this point in time. But it can be flexible, to meet whatever it needs, we need to do for the community and for the provider and for the city.
How much discussion have we had about teaming with an education, with a teaching hospital, about seeing patients there and generating revenue by providing health care at the wellness center? Is that something we're exploring with?
We've actually had some interest from a couple of health care-related facilities who have expressed some interest in doing that, but they, for timing reasons or whatever, have chosen to step back on this first solicitation and look and see what happens going forward.
I get the feeling nobody really wants to be first.
I would say this, I would say we need to be, I think it'd be better if we were more deliberate in this process and not rush into this, you know, maybe even going back and saying, instead of four facilities that are going to be awarded approximately $12 million, would it be better to limit it to two or maybe just one, and then you could make a facility that would be $50 million, for example, and it would be more centrally located? The proposal that was submitted by the YMCA, and it's a great facility, I mean, it is first-class from a health perspective, as far as exercise and swimming and treadmills and all that. I don't think you could find a better place, and that's the one on 119th and South May. It's great, you've got Early Wine Park there, you have access to the whole park. The problem with it, it is such a nice area, the community that surrounds it, from an economic standpoint, could all afford, I'm saying they all could, there could be some exceptions, within three miles, could all afford a membership fee to the Y. The new south Oklahoma City Library over there on 134th and Penn provides certainly books and movies and some activities that meets the requirements for the arts and continued education perspective, as well as the tech center down there at 134th and Penn. And then you've got the Community College just down the street on Meyer Avenue that can certainly provide with the continued education and their new performing arts center and allow senior citizens to get involved in those kinds of activities. I just think, now that we've gotten some information, let's not rush into something. I'm not saying let's don't go forward with this, but let's see if our original thoughts can be achieved, and if they can't be, well, I don't see a problem with rethinking this whole process and trying to come up with a good solution versus just accepting what's being presented to us as far as potential partners.
Still, you know, I understand the dilemma in reference to finding, you know, people to partnership with this, but I would just like for us to be mindful of the fact that this was one of the projects that drove more to the polls than any other of the projects. And a lot of people that voted for this project were people who fell into what we would call the senior category, and they expected to see something in reference to their vote, I think, in a reasonable period of time. I hope we don't get to the point where some of those people are no longer with us in reference to the opportunity to participate in some of these projects. And, you know, I knew that this was going to be a challenge from day one, especially when we knew that we were not going to be the operator of the facility. But as I look at some of these features in the packet, and, you know, being a member of several fitness programs here in Oklahoma City, this is far and beyond, you know, some of the features that some of the top-class wellness centers, fitness centers that you have, that's part of it. And, you know, if, I don't know how much we've looked at other cities that have some of these programs, but, you know, I just don't understand why it would be that difficult, being the, as Pete stated, some of the corporations and some of the institutions that we have here in Oklahoma City that's well-anchored here, that, you know, if we just loosen up a little bit and let them give some dictation, some direction to this, I think we could do this. And if we don't have to do but one, if we just did one in any part of the city, and of course, each one of us would like to have bragging rights to say that I had the first one in my ward, but if we just did one and used it as a starting model, and for whatever the identified features are, you know, but I think that the main features that we got to stay focused on is the fact that, you know, if we say wellness, we got to have something that's major factors of a wellness program, and, you know... did one and used it as a starting model and for whatever the identified features are, you know, but I think that the main features that we got to stay focused on is the fact that, you know, if we say wellness, we got to have something that's major factors of a wellness program. And, you know, I just think that the, as Pete stated, maybe we are too tight with this whole, you know, presentation and that, you know, maybe we need to let some of the potential operators or interested operators or maybe we solicit to them and say, you know, what would you be willing to put in, what would you be willing to be responsible for, for the operating of a facility and the components of it? You know, because as I look at some of this, you know, if you go to, I don't want to start calling names, but you go to some of the top fitness centers right here in Oklahoma City, you won't find some of the features that we have listed. Most of them don't have a walking trail, a walking track on the inside anymore, but at the same time, I think that, you know, we could develop the project where it would be at least, you know, open enough to get one of them started, I think.
Somebody else want to talk?
Gary, then Pete.
Just a couple more things. I just, who else? Go ahead. Just a couple more things. One, I think we, I agree with what Skip's saying. We need to get, we need to open it up. We need to make people know, the people, the potential proposers need to know that this is a much more open process, I think, than this document reflects that it is. I'm not saying it's not open, Mike, I'm just saying that I don't think the document does a good enough job of reflecting this open attitude that you're hearing here. I think we ought to talk about locating in a park. I look at what's happened in the park that's at 46th and Walker, that's just south of the Variety Care. Different constituency there, but that park is a little bitty pocket park. It is working in a way that I, beyond anything I ever imagined it would work. I mean, the people that are at Variety Care are there using the park. It was city-owned property, the park was. We have other parks like that throughout the city that this kind of a facility could be used in, in the same sense that the Boys and Girls Club uses Memorial Park. There's parks all around. And the third thing we might look at is whether or not, I said I had two and I lied, I have three. The, Mike knew I was going to lie, but he already knew that. The third thing is if in fact somebody can build it or could need support, we ought to look at whether or not a portion of the adequate share could be put in an endowment and some of that money then, that if it was built for less than that, some of that money used for O and M. I'm not saying we do that, but that would be, I'm looking, trying to think outside the box for ways to satisfy somebody that doesn't have a good operating stream, that might be a good operator, we could supplement the stream. Say you only get 10 million, you build in a city park, you bring your folks in, we'll put 2.5 million in a fund and you get the money, you get the, like the community foundation operation, you get the money. May not be legal, Kenny probably would have to tell us whether that's legal or not, but, and I don't know whether it's a good idea or not, but it is an idea. It's just, I just want to, I hate to see it struggle, although I agree with David, too, that we don't need to rush, but it just seems like we're almost at a standstill with it.
I don't think we're there yet.
Well, I hope you're right. I hope you're right.
I don't think we're there yet.
Gary?
I just want to make sure we all understand what I think are some of the problems with this that I've seen in the past year serving on this committee. One of the best suggestions that I heard was a suggestion of a coalition or a nonprofit be formed that all the entities could belong to and provide their services as the coalition placed them here and there or moved them around so that you didn't have an entity trying to run it, but you had a coalition of all these people. But having said that, none of that came forward or seemed to move very far. In the vetting process that the mayor suggests, and I wholeheartedly support that, to me, listening to what the people had to say in that committee for the last year, the most important vetting that we need to do is understanding what it's going to cost to run these things. Because I don't believe you have currently anybody out there that says they can run it without annual dollars from the city. I also think you've got three distinct groups trying to fit into these centers. You've got groups that talk about education and learning and culture and, you know, the community center look to them. You've got the group that talks about the clinics and the health and welfare part of it, and then you've got the physical fitness side of it. And you have partners that are good at one of the three, but they're not necessarily good at all the three. And if they were good in one, they were going to have to reach out and find the other two and try to find a way to make that work. But I didn't hear any of them say that they could do it inside their own dollars, even with a free building. Hand them a free building and all they've got to pay is the operating cost of that building and their staff, and I still didn't hear anybody come forward and say that they could do it. So I just caution us before we go down the road and actually get to the point where we're going to build that first one that we fully vetted whether this, and I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm not taking a stance on pro or con of annual operating costs, but I think this council needs to know exactly what it's getting itself into before they build that very first one. Because if it's going to take annual tax dollars every year from here on out for one, two, three, four, or five of them, I think that we need to have, we need to understand what that's going to, how that's going to impact us on an annual basis.
Gary, I would say that even the partners who have submitted proposals have at least informally expressed their concern about the ongoing maintenance cost and whether or not they will be able to maintain that facility in a manner that they'd like to see. So I think that's something we really need to get a good understanding on before we really release that first one. Having said that, I am a big proponent of this. Conceptually, I think it's great. I think we ought to focus on what we can do for the seniors of Oklahoma City and I'd like to see a solution develop here. In Ward Five, though, I just have a belief that it needs to be towards the northern section of our particular ward, whether I-240, Southwest 59th Street. Because I think many of the citizens in the further southern part, a more affluent area, have access to a lot of these things, maybe not at one stop, but like I said, you can go to the Y, you go to the technical center, you can go to the library, you can go to the college. It's not in one location, but all of these things are accessible and a lot of the people in Ward Five have the ability to pay memberships and pay for these things. I think, or at least my understanding was, we were going to try to place these in locations to where the immediate community was not as affluent, who were not able to access these things on their own, and the city was going to assist them in their ability to access this. And that's what I'd like to hope, that we keep that in mind. And again, I like it. I think these are important, but I don't want us to rush into something and then have some regrets after we've started with this project.
Meg, and then Pat.
Just a very quick comment, though, David. I think when we talked about this and we looked at models in other cities, North Little Rock being one that was discussed quite a bit, it was largely supported by membership dollars. And so, you know, we need to be cognizant of locating this in a place where membership dollars are a big part of the ongoing ability to manage the operating costs.
Okay. Pat?
You know, I think it's been great discussion because I think this is one of those projects that was unbeknownst to us at the time it was adopted, is the most difficult project in our whole MAPS program because of the definition was sort of hazy and the operating relationships were sort of a blue sky almost. But I don't think, having said that, that maybe I'm wrong, that all this discussion has any bearing on this document at all. This document doesn't propose constructing any building. It just says if you build a building and it has X facilities in it, these are the standards you'll use. So I think we could, you know, I would feel comfortable adopting the resolution this morning on this particular document and then continuing discussion on how these things are going to be located, manned, and what specific entities each one will have, amenities one will have.
Good. I'm in favor of the document and I agree exactly what you said, but just since Mike's here and we're having a discussion about maps, I just want to, a little tangential, but three requests. Number one is that I think Gary hit the nail on the head on operational cost. This isn't going to be just about senior wellness centers, but I would encourage vetting as fast as possible the operational costs of all these projects, transit, the convention center, the park. Number two, I would ask that you move the date and the schedule of the convention center subcommittee. What comes out of that committee causes ripples to go through the system. I've heard from four different sources that the convention center subcommittee wants to close the Harvey Spine, for example. I want to go to that meeting and I've requested this already and we didn't get anywhere, but to have that subcommittee meeting during city council meetings on Tuesday mornings means that none of us can attend. And so I'd ask that that be moved to a time, I'll come any other time during the week except during city council. Number three, if you haven't read the article this morning on public works and planning and the, you know, by your smile, I assume you have read it. I think that, for me, and I know this is tangential to this, but it is so important in terms of maybe some of the shortcomings of the process. It's unclear to me, to me, planning should be central at this point. And I just, I think Oklahoma City government is very public work-centric and goes, and marginalizes the planning department. That's just my own individual opinion and I think the opposite should be true at this stage. It seems to me, attending some of the subcommittee, that everyone is being considered in isolation and somebody needs to look at the big picture and figure out how all these entities are going to interact with each other. What's the impact of the convention center on the park and vice versa, on transit on the convention center and on the park and vice versa? And the people who have the long-term vision, the 20, the 50, the 100-year version of vision as opposed to the two or three-year vision is the planning department. And I just don't think it's fair to ask public works officials to be solely in charge of selecting, for example, be the architect or the designer of the Central Park. If you have five spots, it's not clear to me at all why three of those would be engineers from the public works department. You'd have no one from the planning department and you'd have two people, I mean, have good intentions, but they have no training or in terms of planning or managing designers, managing planners. They're novices in that field. But regardless of who they are, if you have five spots and three of them are from the public works department, they have a majority regardless of what those two believe. I'm concerned. I think that we can learn from some of the hiccups in Project 180 and I think some of the same themes we're seeing is that I think it was very public work-centric and planning was marginalized during Project 180. I think we could, we could have improved, but I'm very concerned that that's happening now with all, with these multiple MAPS projects.
Your honor. Let the city manager respond to the process.
I just wanted to make one comment, if I may, before the city manager. I think Councilman Shede is on spot-on target in terms of this goes, but I think we would benefit, we, the council, would benefit by a presentation from the public works director or the assistant city manager in charge of that about how this process really works because I don't think there's a thorough understanding at the horseshoe level of how the process works, who is included, and how they determine which architect or engineer to accept. I think that might be helpful for the whole project.
We'd be happy to do that. Let me cover a couple of things responding to Mr. Shede's comments. First of all, we'll look at the operational costs. We've done that before, probably before you were here, but we'd be happy to do that again and to update that. We can look at the convention center subcommittee. There were some issues with that, but we'll be happy to go forward with that again. We are under the planning. I have a MAPS three meeting every Monday morning with Mr. Todd and Mr. Winger and a couple of others. Recently, I've added Mr. Mize to that meeting and Russell Klaus attends at me. So we sit down there and I do, and I do value Russell's input as we go forward on that. Russell was involved in the review of the proposals that we received on the parks process. We got a great selection process. We had 16 national firms, really nice submittals on that. Interviews, states are not still set at this point in time, we're having some problems struggling getting that set up. The process it's lined out has been by ordinance, well, not by ordinance, but resolution by council, is that we have, I have a representative, the user department is Mr. Todd, and the public works department sits on that. We add users to that and we've adopted a policy for the MAPS three process that those users are members of the subcommittee that are being involved. And they're involved in both the calling process when the proposals come in and review that and also on the selection process as we go forward. I mean, I can give up my seat to Russell if we need to as we go forward on that. I don't know if I have a problem with that or not. I really hadn't thought about it until I read the paper. I had an issue until I read the paper this morning. But we can certainly discuss that and go forward with that. But I do value the planning process. We are implementing them and they do come to the meetings every Monday morning now, so we are trying to get them involved as we go forward. I've been involved in literally hundreds of procurement selections for professional services over the years and it's always a fun process because you've got people that are trying to sell you and they've got great ideas and you've got some of the, we're able to track some of the best in the world, not just the United States in the world, to come and look at this. We've got firms from London on this and outside, some really neat ideas. It's a fun process to go through and listen to. Generally, when you get into a situation like this, there isn't a bad decision to be made. I mean, you've got two or three of the best and they're really good and whichever one you choose is going to be fine, but it's also generally a consensus decision when you get there. And rarely is there a dispute as to how that is involved. Councilman Selyer has asked to sit in on those processes and so I believe that she will be sitting in on the interviews if it meets with her schedule. They have not been set yet, so as that comes forward to do so. It's, you know, y'all can't be there, but I wouldn't, you know, we don't have a problem with that if you wanted to sit in and take a look at that. But we're pretty blessed with the amount of talent that our projects are attracting right now. One, they're big substantial projects, but with the slowest of the economy elsewhere, we're really getting the pick of some really, really nice options out.
Gary?
Well, I just want to, and I'm not trying to do a rebuttal, but I just want to make sure people understand that the, Mike and his group and Eric and then David have done, have gone out of their way to make sure the committees intermingle. They haven't done anything for the convention center that the parks or the transit committee didn't know about or get the same presentation and vice versa. The convention center got a presentation on what transit was talking about and what they were talking about for the line and the parks, how the parks heard about the convention center and how that was going to interact and all that. So, and I haven't seen very many meetings that Russell hadn't been at, so planning is aware of what's going on with all those. So I just didn't want you to think that a lot of that was going on in the dark because those committees are talking and it's not unusual to see a parks committee member showing up at the transit meeting or the transit committee member showing up at the convention center meeting or whatever. So it's not like this is all being done in a vacuum out there. There is a lot of interaction going on with it.
So we're on the same page. We want maximum integration of all the different subcommittees and even, I would say, the Marriott Gardens staff, we had the administrator of the Marriott Gardens, she was not, not very aware of what was going on in Central Park and that programming. I mean, even getting, merging, I mean, those are two parks right by each other. I mean, they should be integrating maximally. So just maximum integration.
We agree. Mike?
Just to go back where I thought we were heading with this, the document that we had before is right here, Mike, with respect to the wellness center. This is what the committee, the subcommittee on the wellness center is recommending the components be for a senior wellness center. Is that correct?
Yeah, in some, in some relative proportion.
In some relative proportion. And as I go back to, as I recollect back to the original discussion on MAPS three, there's nothing in this document that should be a surprise to any of us because all these components are discussed in one form of detail or not. Were they not? I thought they were. And all along, we knew that one of the key things to doing this was where the center and centers would be located geographically and we've already talked to that. And one of the key components that we were hoping to have done was that a person would come along and operate the center for us with no financial involvement of the city once it was built. And that may or may not prove to be a viable thing and we need to address that. The question of, I think Meg mentioned, North Little Rock. In some of the earlier discussions, North Little Rock was kind of held up to us as an icon of what a senior wellness center would an icon of what a senior wellness center would, should look like. Is that, am I off?
It is, it is one of the ones that has been held up across the country as a model.
And there's a number of other models across the country that have been held up.
Correct.
Okay? And the document we have here reflects the thinking of putting those, those thinkings together in this document right here? So this wasn't done in total ignorance of what a senior wellness center should look like?
Yes. It's designed to provide a program for the physical facility that would have enough flexibility in it to provide different kinds of functional programming for the individual centers if they're different and located in different areas. That's, that's the goal of this document.
And when I was reading this myself, I looked at this, and I thought, this, you know, these components here are what, in my mind, the vision for a senior wellness center encompasses. It's not the same as some of the other things that I've heard here, and I could be wrong in that. So I think, you know, this document, we're asked today, Mayor, to what, to approve this document as a, as a guideline to go forward? Is that what we're trying to, what we're discussing here?
I think we're, yeah, we're, we're substantially saying that we're in the right direction.
Yeah.
Continually going in the right direction. It's our chance to meet and discuss it.
I see this as going, quote, in the right direction, unquote. And the comment was made about thinking outside the box. I've been accused of being a little bit screwy on that idea, because we had a armory that became available to us, didn't we, Jim, down in the center part of town? And I said, why don't we think about that? And somebody mentioned, it may have been Gary, somebody mentioned Will Rogers Park as a potential location, which fits the park mantra that we're talking about. After the discussion on the infamous cell tower last week, my wife and I went out that night just for further investigation, looking at this property from a different area, and I threw up to Dr. Shadid, and I think he was ready to get the psychiatrist after me. Why not that location? And why not go with getting Tegus Hospital excited? And take the Pacer Center, which is just a mile to the north, and move it down there? I mean, and let's market this thing to the providers. I think while we've been up to this point, we've had a product, but we haven't gone out and sold to different people who can come up with the money to operate this thing. So I don't think we're, you know, the sky is not falling. I think it's time to move forward, and let's get some creative thinking, and let's go forward this. That's my sermon.
Mayor, in due respect, the one problem I have with this is we're saying this is a resolution, but you have, we have in here project requirements. How do you sell something to someone that you want to participate? You need their money, you need their resources, but you're saying these are the requirements that you have to have. That's why I said, why can't we wait and ask the providers or any of those individuals that we were trying to solicit to say, what would you be willing to, to, to give, or what would you be willing to participate as part of a program in a wellness center? If you say that your project requirements are each one of these identified components of this, this package, you know, well, if you say a health clinic, and you've got to have an examination room, and, and all of those components, and at the same time, you're looking at maybe Metro Tech that may be an interested party, and they don't want to go that far in reference to a real doctor, nurse, patient relationship as it relates to a wellness program. Now, on the other hand, you have, you know, where you have a cafeteria-style of, I think, for nutrition, you know, all wellness centers don't necessarily have to have a nutritional program in reference to feeding. But that's why my concern was, is that if this is the resolution, we're saying, then if we vote on this resolution, we're saying project requirements, that this is what you're taking to anyone that you're trying to solicit to be a part of this program, and say, if you're going to participate with us, then these are the requirements that have to be part of the program. That's, that was my concern about.
Councilman, we've got a little bit of an issue of a chicken and an egg situation. What comes first? We've got to start with something. And so we've put out the program requirements. If a provider, service provider, comes into us and says, we'd like to do this, but we can't meet A, B, and M on what you're saying on the requirements, we'd be happy to take that back and bring that back through the committee process and to the council, and see if we can get something to go. However, the, our partnering agencies out there, they're asking, what do you guys want? And so we've got to start somewhere and begin the negotiations back and forth, and you've got to have something to start with. And we're proposing that this is the start point on this. That doesn't mean at all that this is where the finish point is, but these are some expectations that we'd like to see met. And if somebody comes back in and says, you know, we'd like to run this, but again, we're not going to do this part and that part, we'd be happy to take that, that down and back through the process and to the council to try to get going, but we got to, we got to start at some point.
Your Honor, I just like to say, this is sort of like a menu in a Chinese restaurant. One from column A, one from column B, one from column C. It doesn't describe the whole thing. And I think that's, we're losing sight of the fact that this is a list of the way certain aspects of these things would be constructed, or could be constructed.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about every center being, using this, all the features in here. They may, but that's not what I think the intent of this resolution is. This says, this is, if these are some standards we're going to adopt if we go forward with these kind of amenities. And I think they're flexible. If we had, if somebody come in and said, well, I want to do everything, but I don't like the finishes you suggested, or this, I think we have the flexibility, even with this document, because they're guidelines. They're not, they're not an official contract to do anything.
Ready to move on? All right. Mike, thanks very much.
Thank you. If I might have just one moment of privilege, I want to thank Councilman Mars for his year of service to the MAPS three committees and subcommittees. I don't know that he missed a meeting the entire year, and we appreciate his input. And we're really looking forward to Councilman Ryan filling that role in the coming year. Thank you.
How about a motion on item 8G? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. And 8H? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. On item 8I, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right. How about a motion? Second. Cast your votes. Item moves to executive session. Item 8J, do we need executive session on this?
We do.
Okay. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8K is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak, and are any items listed under 8K? All right. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8L is a claim recommended for approval. That's, sorry, that's 9A. 9A, claim recommended for approval. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. On 10 is items from council. Pat, you want to get us started?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
All right. Skip? Meg?
Just very quickly, I'd like to congratulate the chamber and the folks at At Tinker. We had amazingly fun at Tinker Dining Out on Friday night. Secretary Donnelly, head of the Air Force, was here in Oklahoma City and, you know, expressing such wonderful support and thanks for all the efforts out at Tinker Air Force Base. It was really a nice evening, and I had the opportunity last night to attend a meeting at Heritage Hills, in Heritage Hills. And we talked an awful lot about a number of issues, and I really want to compliment the neighborhood for sort of reactivating lots of their committees and processes. And I think we're going to see some great partnership with our historic neighborhoods as a result of that. So, thank you.
Uh-huh. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to congratulate Gary Mars for his award, or award, yes, for serving as president for the Committee of 100. And it's very obvious that the members of the firefighters really do appreciate Gary's service and efforts here. And that committee helps identify and provide some assistance to police and firefighters and other safety officers who've either been injured or have other needs. So it's a great organization, and it was great to have Gary as our president. And now the fun begins as the former president. He can relax a little bit. But he, it certainly was obvious that everybody really enjoyed Gary and his service here for the city. And then, secondly, I want to thank the firefighters for inviting me to their awards banquet Saturday night. It's always very interesting to see what's taken place this past year and the efforts of those firefighters who went beyond what is normally expected. Thank you.
All right. Pete?
Just a brief comment on the reading program. Meg and I are participating in a reading buddy program at Heronville, and yesterday was the second session for it. It is 70 people, 70 volunteers from the city are participating, far beyond what we originally expected. And it is just an absolutely delightful program. I know I get more out of it than the young lady that I'm her buddy. And it, I'm hoping we can move it on and expand it to another school with more city employees in the fall. But after two weeks, I would certainly deem it a success at this point. And I know we've gotten some feedback already from the system. Gotten, is that a good, I don't believe that's a word, is it? Gotten? You probably know that, speaking on TV a lot. But we have received lots of positive feedback from the system and from the school itself. And it is just a really quality program, and I'm proud to be part of it. And I look forward to next fall, and I would encourage any of you on the horseshoe that have time to do it, to look into it when we open it back up again, because it's a very rewarding program.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. It was a privilege for my wife and I to attend the firefighters' awards banquet Saturday night, and I appreciate the hospitality showed out there. We're based in Oklahoma City, to have a fine, a fire department that is laser of life on the line, to see the movies and to hear the testimonies of the firefighters who had done that this past year was very uplifting. I'd like to thank the neighbors at Meridian Hills and also Musgrave Pennington for allowing me to speak briefly at their neighborhood meetings over the last week. And I'd like to encourage the neighbors in the John Glenn Neighborhood Association. That's an area that used to be in Ward Five, which was D N, well, which was placed into Ward Three due to the redistricting. And thank you for Kathy Ward's invitation to come out tonight. Look forward to meeting as many of those neighbors that can come. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
I'm just processing what we heard today from the Civic Center Foundation and Carol Troy. I just, I'm hurt and disappointed. I, to hear that the Civic Center Foundation, at the height of debate, when we were making this very important decision for the city, decided to call the park Larry Nichols Park without asking Larry Nichols, putting it out there, it had the effect of suppressing debate. And then, and then as soon as he found out about it, he asked that his name be taken off of it. So they did it without his permission. You don't throw his name out there lightly. He's a great civic leader. He's a lot from Oklahoma City, but there was a lot of fear that could be induced by putting his name out there. And I know just from talking to community leaders who wanted to go to the DDRC and state their case, but once they heard that, stepped down for just that only reason, is that it was going to be called Larry Nichols Park. And so then to get passage and then retract that, best-case scenario I can come up with is it's irresponsible. Worst-case, it would violate my system of ethics, so I would call it unethical. I think that that foundation was heavy-handed. Sandy Myers, her, Selola Quies here, a woman that I believe wanted to tear down the Civic Center not too many years ago. But that, I found that the Civic Center Foundation's behavior reprehensible. I'm hurt and disappointed to have to use that word, but very disappointed. Thank you.
Okay. City manager reports?
Kathy O'Connor was scheduled to be here. Her mother passed away yesterday, and so our thoughts and prayers are with Kathy during this time of the loss, and we will reschedule that at a more appropriate time, a more convenient time for Kathy. So moving on to item B, we've, I've asked Eric to come forward and give us a presentation on the one-way to two-way street conversion downtown. There's a lot of, obviously, construction going on downtown, and one of the byproducts of Project 180 is to, is to convert the one-way streets. That was one of the goals, was to, is to get that done. And with that, Mr. Winger?
Thank you, Jim, Mayor and Council. There's been a lot of questions over the last few months as we've worked towards progress on Project 180, a lot of the one-way to two-way conversions of downtown streets. And so what I have for you this morning is a summary of the history of that, what's been completed and what you can expect next. When we look at the historical perspective, many of you may recall the downtown traffic study that recommended the two-way conversion of streets. That was actually accepted by the city council back in August of 2001. There was also an ordinance that was adopted just about a month later that recommended streets from one-way to two-way. And a lot of the two-way conversions have been possible due to a lot of the work that has been initiated by Project 180. But Project 180 has not converted all downtown streets to two-way. And so we've got some that are going to fall into two categories of work. Again, some that are going to be Project 180-driven, but then others that you'll see that are going to be completed by city forces. This is a map of downtown generally. You'll identify the interstate at the lower part of the drawing. You'll see some of the major streets identified in the blue boxes, the downtown park as well. The completed conversions are those that you see on this drawing identified in blue. The ones that are still currently one-way are those that are in red. We talk frequently about Walker. We talk frequently about Hudson. And so as you look at those, you'll see a portion of Walker up to Main Street has already been converted to two-way. You can see that today outside of council chambers. But a lot of these are still Project 180 areas that are under construction. And so a lot of the red lines that you still see on this drawing, and I'll have one a little bit later here in just a moment to show you how those will also be converted. The recent two-way conversions, this is just a short list of those. Oklahoma Avenue from Second to Tenth, Walker from Third to Main, Chartel and Lee Avenues from California to Main, Robinson Avenue, significant conversions there from Reno to Southwest Seventh Street, Harvey Avenue from Main Street to Thirteenth. And I think that's kind of a little known secret. I mean, Harvey is two-way today. It, it's one road that we probably don't travel often, but it has provided increased access into that area. These are some of those completed streets. This would be Northwest Fourth and Harvey. You'll actually see the work that is there. Obviously, signalization is a major part of the two-way conversions, but some of the other things that we have to take in consideration are some of the street geometries. You see new lane striping, but we have to enhance signals and make sure that those are coordinated as well. So there's an intensive engineering aspect to this to make sure that that works. This next one is Fifth Street and Harvey. You're also starting to see some of what we call the sherros that are being painted onto the streets. These are the shared lanes that are also accessed by vehicles and bicycles. This is Reno and Walker. And of course, these are a lot of the Project 180 completed streetscapes as well, with the new landscaping, the new sidewalks, and the amenity zones. As we talk about upcoming planned two-way conversions, and again, referencing back to the, to the drawing that had a lot of the red on it, Walker Avenue from Main Street to Sixth is actually a Project 180 work that is underway. We're expecting that completion just a little bit later this year. That would include the areas in front of City Hall all the way to Sixth, where at that point, Walker will be two-way north and south. Hudson Avenue from Reno to Robert S. Kerr, we've broken this into the next two items. You're going to see that completion a little bit sooner, as it is a Project 180 project up to Kerr. But north of Kerr, on up to Northwest Sixth, that is also a completed project that we're working on now, or to-be-completed project as a city project. We have some internal resources that, we have the poles that are available, we have the equipment that can actually make that happen, and so we're working on that simultaneously with Project 180. With our resources in hand, we're fully capable of making that and also completing that by the end of the year. Robinson Avenue from Sheridan to Park, it's just a short section that's not yet completed, but that'll be completed no later than this summer as a part of Project 180. And then from Park to Dean McGee also is a part of Project 180 as well.
Eric, so the fund, you're saying a city, Hudson Avenue is a city project. Where are those funds coming from?
We have opportunities either through our 2007 bond issue to fund those conversions as a part of geographically located projects. And so we're going to suggest that that be actually a bond-funded project to complete that conversion.
From the unlisted funds?
We actually, in this case, it's a listed project. You know, some of the listed projects are streets where there are exact street listings. Others are by square mile. This actually falls into one of those square mile listings where we have the opportunity to propose projects through bond advisory for consideration, and this would be one of those projects that we're going to propose. These are some of those others. You'll see some of the one-way signs that are, that are at the middle of this drawing. This would be Northwest Fourth and Hudson. And this would be our goals in the short term on some of these near-to-be-completed two-ways, to move those signs down and have two-ways administered here. Dean A. McGee and also Hudson. Again, you can see some of this work is just pending. You can see the one-way street up in the upper right-hand corner.
Eric, can I ask you another question? So you're saying that this will be, Hudson will be done by the end of this year?
Yes.
Now, what, because you raised some concerns about parking garages, the county, county Now, what, you raised some concerns about parking garages, the county's parking garage.
So, yes, one of the unique challenges that we're finding, and this is what Project 180 engineers have taken into account already with the streetscapes. For streets that have been one-way for so long, in a lot of cases, the driveways that access garages have been angled for that one-way traffic to enter that garage smoothly, meaning it's not perpendicular to the street. So it's going to require city staff and some of our contracts to go out there and straighten those driveways when the two-way conversion is actually underway. So we're working out those details now, and that'll be a part of that work that the city completes.
Although, there's just a couple of those.
There's only a couple.
So what would be the strategy for the parking garage?
We would simply go in and possibly with just a temporary easement, complete that work as a public project and correct the geometry. So when I talk about the geometric differences between one and two-way, remove the curbs, widen the driveway, make it a straight entry instead of an angled entry into the garage.
Can you still enter from both lanes, both directions, or are you going to limit that?
No, the goal would be to have it accessible in both directions.
Right now, it's only accessible from one direction.
Right. Yes. So like other garages, either the New Devon Garage or the Sheridan-Walker Garage, those all have straight entries that are already part of the street conversions. Some of the county garages, we're going to have to adjust.
But there may only be two of those, Mr. Pete, as we go forward. It's not a huge issue.
Okay. So you don't need a study? You don't need, okay?
No. There are some future two-way conversions, and as I get ready to show this next drawing to you, when we talk about Hudson Avenue, Southwest Seventh to Reno, Broadway, Southwest Fourth to Third, and then you'll also see Third, Fourth, and Fifth. These would be more in the quarter shore area from Western to Gaylord. Those are some longer-term conversions that we're going to have to consider. As you look at this next, some of these, this would be in that quarter shore area. You're actually going, you're seeing Union Station in the background. You can see the final building of the postal center there. These are all, again, as you look at Third Street, it's one-way to the east. Fourth Street's one-way to the west. This street's, again, one-way to the east. The goal would be to look at those individually as conversions prior to actually doing the park project. They're obviously becoming an enhanced access point from Interstate Forty, the new Interstate Forty, for access and egress to downtown for like Thunder Games and other major downtown events. This is Broadway from Third to Fourth. You can see the Do Not Enter sign there, but ultimately, as we walk through these, the completed conversions, again, are in blue. This next slide shows those planned conversions. That would complete Walker, Hudson, and Robinson. Again, all that to be done by the end of this year, some of that sooner than that. Then the future conversions you'll see are located to the south of the downtown area predominantly, south of the old interstate, more or less in the quarter shore area, and we're going to be looking at city resources to make those conversions as necessary to enhance traffic. I think that we will walk slowly on these. I mean, some of these conversions, obviously, as we look at the downtown park, we'll want to look at some accessibility and coordination issues, but as those become available, we want to look at those and approach the city council to move forward. Logistics, again, we mentioned using city forces and materials where possible. Obviously, we want to be wise in our expenditures, but it involves setting new traffic signal poles to accommodate two-way traffic, restriping of streets, in a lot of cases, replacing signage. But the other issue is also ADA compliance. As we look at these enhancements and as we do street work, we're going to have to make sure that the ADA-accessible ramps are compliant, that the walkways are compliant, so you can expect some additional sidewalks. Now, I wouldn't suggest that we're ready to move forward in areas with complete streetscapes. The Project 180 streetscapes are quite expensive, but we still need to make certain level of improvements as we look at the two-way conversion. So that's where we're at today. So I hope that's answered many of the questions. If you have others, I'd be happy to address those now.
Your Honor, just a quick question. The impact of Project 180 on the businesses, the construction areas have been significant. As we go forward with this project, can we take a little time, maybe a little extra time, to coordinate with the businesses so we can minimize natural impact on our business?
We will do so.
Okay. What's your, if you're able to recycle some of the traffic equipment, what's your, how much are we going to have to take from the 2007 bond to get this?
I don't have the full estimate yet. You know, if we're looking at just the Hudson Avenue two-way, the city's portion, I believe the estimate was in the $200,000 range to make that conversion, but that's using city existing equipment that's available today, and that would be the items that we don't have. That would be engaging the contracts for the concrete work, some of the wiring. Obviously, the interconnection of the signals requires some wiring and conduit. So those things that aren't recyclable, that would be that cost.
All right. Eric, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. And city manager reports? All right. Seeing no one here, no one has signed up. All right, we have executive session.